Thank you, Councilor.
You did that in there?
I'm fine. How are you, sir?
Good, good. That's just saying, just to make a motion to adopt it, so. I don't guess, normally you don't have to do it for special call, but it doesn't hurt for the minutes to adopt the agenda. I noticed there's no Pledge of Allegiance, but I'll put that in there.
Robbie, when you get a chance, how about fixing that clock up there?
Yes, sir, I will. I'm just a little bit too short. I was about a foot tall. I could've grabbed it without a step ladder.
Jimmy did it. Did he get it down one time, Jimmy?
Yeah.
You have to use stick.
I don't remember why I did it.
You got, you got the bottom.
I did.
This, uh, special call town, uh, council meeting is called to order. We will begin with the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
You have to do an invocation.
I can.
Mr. Winfrey.
Morning, afternoon. You're early. Look at the clock.
If y'all would, bow your heads, please. Dear Lord, we thank you for all your many blessings and ask that you watch over our town, watch over our citizens and meet each one of our citizens' needs. We ask that you grant wisdom as council to make decisions on behalf of the citizens. In Jesus' name, amen.
Amen.
We need to review and adopt the agenda. Any question, comment, any additions?
Mr. Mayor, uh, the septic system repair has been taken care of using the emergency spending authority and our separation of duties policy. So hopefully, we're on the right track with that. Uh, my understanding is it will either be repaired this Thursday or Saturday. So I don't see any reason for council to have it on the agenda or discuss it further.
All right, I'll make a motion that we adopt the agenda with the change, uh, to strike item number three. I'll second it. Any discussion? Mr. Foy.
Aye.
Mr. Landrith.
Aye.
Mr. Jones.
Aye.
And Mr. Rigsby has just joined us. Would you care to cast, uh,
What am I casting for?
Adopting the agenda?
Yeah, sure.
Okay.
Aye.
And I am aye. We open for citizens' comments. Do we have anyone to like to speak? Hi. Next item is our water system capital improvements and engineering firm selection.
Mr. Mayor, I added this, uh, item and one of the reasons for calling this special call meeting tonight. Uh, before we get into, uh, uh, what I'd like to talk about, Tim, uh, has a guest with us and I would like to turn the floor over to Tim for some, uh, improvements that we need to do to the water system. Uh, so, Tim?
Okay, fellas, for some time, we've been having some discussions how we could best catch up with some of our deferred maintenance. Uh, mainly, I think this item was set aside during COVID and just no way to get it done. And, uh, hopefully, we're going to get started here with, uh, opening up our blowoffs at the end of our lines and exercising our valves. We, uh, I feel we need to do this. It's recommended by the North Carolina Royal Water Association. Council's in possession of a, uh, copy of the distribution of valve maintenance. This was emailed to y'all. And so we have on our agenda tonight a proposal from A and D Enterprises. And Mr. Michael Hodges is here. He's gonna, uh, speak a little bit about his proposal and answer any questions council has. Mr. Hodges? If you would give your name and address for us for the record.
I'm Michael Hodges, uh, A and D Enterprises. We're, uh, at 2975 Montsinger Road, Winston-Salem, North Carolina, 27107.
Robbie, is that mic on? Is this related to item four on the agenda?
Yeah, yes, yes.
Okay.
And what I sent over was, um, just basically, uh, a quote, a baseline quote for what we would do. We're gonna come out, if, if we're awarded, we would come out and, uh, get a map from the, the town of Stokesdale, like a master map, and go in and start locating all the blowoffs at the end of the line. What that does is, um, once located and we open them up, it, it brings all the materials that get stagnant towards the end of the line. And then it starts backing up in the line and, and your line eventually gets built up. So if you flow those, like Tim was saying, um, they recommend once a year, it, at very minimum, once a year on all your blowoffs. It just helps keep the circulation. It, it helps take all the, the minerals that, and deposits that are built up in the water system itself from forming to the pipe. And then, um, we've seen six-inch lines, uh, crystallize down to, down to one to two inches. So it, it's gonna help open up the system, uh, get those minerals out. But what, what we proposed here was going around, uh, from what I understand, it hadn't been done in a while. So some valve boxes may be, uh, under grass, that they could be under asphalt. Um, we would bring out a locator and attempt to find the boxes per the plans. If that's unable to be done, then, um, I believe the town now has a contract with a locator that they would come out and locate the utilities a little bit better. And then maybe we could, we could spot the, where the blowoffs are, are at or supposed to be. We propose to mark the good ones with a green paint or, or a blue paint. And then, uh, I would rather use blue on the water and then like a red paint on, uh, for the bad ones that, that we would need to go back and address. However, um, what we've seen in the past with doing the valve operations, uh, not only with blowoffs, but valves in general, if they've not been exercised and they've been left open and they're left all the way open and not backed off a quarter of a turn, then they could be locked up or seized up. And when you go to start operating these, sometimes the, the top of the valve breaks loose. Depending on how old the valves are, you could run into a situation where we would have to start shutting some lines down and replacing some valves immediately in order to get the water stopped if the blowoff valve does not operate correctly. So, um, we were proposing, uh, two men and a truck with a locator and then hand tools. And obviously, on our trucks, we have a water source to put in the valve boxes. There are a lot of times what you find is the silt and road, um, salt, anything, anything that's on the road and it rains, it ends up in the valve boxes. So you have to, uh, wet that material and then suck it out with a vac. So we would, we would take care of all that. We, we're estimating one to three hours. I mean, we could come in and if, if there, if it's like the electrical thing here and it's, we can walk right up, find it, no location, uh, and it's cleaned out, it may take as little as 30 minutes if it's operational. And, and we'll just keep track of time. If you want to have a, a representative ride with us at any time when we're doing it, we can, however y'all would like for us to do that, we, we would be fine. We're very transparent. We're a small family-owned business. We're a minority business. My mom owns, uh, 51% of the business. So we've been in business for around 30 years. And, uh, we, we work all local here. So with, we work off our name. We never advertise. We got references with City of Thomasville, City of King, City of Winston-Salem, uh, High Point. We, we do a lot of work in the area, Greensboro. So, um, if anybody's got any questions for me, I'd be happy to answer.
Any questions for Mike?
Well, I, I don't, I do want to be sure council hears you. I understand. We want to be sure everybody at the council and everybody else here understands.
Yes, sir.
The work that you're gonna perform to open these blowoffs off is maintenance work. If there's a valve that's stuck or inoperative, then that would become a repair under a, it would have to be a different contract. Uh, we would either hire y'all to fix it or perhaps Yates Construction, uh, whatever we might have to work out. But, uh, there is some risk here in that, uh, these, these things haven't been touched in a long time. So this needs to be called up, but yet at the same time, it's kind of an unknown because we don't know how many might be stuck or in some state of disrepair or hard to locate, those types of things. And for the benefit of everybody here, I did speak with our ORC, Gary Machusis. And we're gonna coordinate with him. He, he's aware of everything that's going on. And, uh, he does not have the time or the resources to do this for us. And it's, I also spoke to Gene Robertson with Yates Construction about what we're doing. And, you know, he agrees that we need to catch this up. He's going to be available to use his locator that, that belongs to Yates Construction. If we can't find any of them, he can get on the tracer wire and hopefully, we can locate them that way. But we should be able to do them in batches. You know, if you can't find a dozen, then he'll go do a dozen. So we, you know, we're not gonna call him out there for one at a time.
Right.
And so I asked Gene with Yates Construction how, how many he thought we had. And it's a kind of a big question. Uh, he came down with 50 or 60.
Okay.
And that was just kind of a guess. The original plan, the original ASBILTS will have these on it. But after that, uh, based on my conversation with Gene and what I understand about what we have in the map room, we'll have to use individual subdivision plans to locate the rest of them.
Okay.
So what we're gonna try to do here is focus on our original installation and, uh, see how this goes. And, uh, it's, uh, we're kind of wading into the on and on a little bit, but this is the time of the year to do it. And if you folks have got time to do it, Yates does not. And so I, I certainly am supportive of this, uh, concept of getting these called up. Anybody else have any questions from this?
If you run up on, let's say you get the valve, say the first one, and it's bad and it needs to be repaired, will you be able to repair it at that time?
Yes, we can. We can. Um, we may not be able to that exact day unless it is an emergency. If, if we can't not get it shut off, we'll do whatever means it takes to get that valve repaired and shut down. We won't just leave the water running.
But you'll have some parts there.
Yes, sir. Yes, sir. We carry, we carry materials like this on hand for, for a lot of reasons. But we do a lot of emergency work. So we try to keep three or four of these on hand at any time. Most of these will be, they're neck down to two inch. So most of your blowoffs will be two inch, two inch valves at the end of the line.
Right.
Um, yeah, and, and we would be able to fix anything at, at that time, as, as long as we have your blessing. We're not gonna go out and, and just start repairing stuff that needs to be repaired unless, unless it's something we can't get shut down. We would obviously still make a call to you guys and, and let you have the final say, but we, we could repair it at the time, yes, sir.
Right, okay. Yeah, we're probably gonna have somebody to, well, probably Tim.
You're, you're gonna have some that's just,
Probably gonna be the mayor.
That's gonna open and, and not shut. And you won't be able to get closed back, unfortunately. But that's why you do this, cause the more, the more you get them open and you get the minerals and stuff washed out and cleaned out. And, and a lot of times, you can get it to close back just by operating multiple times. And that's what we do. We'll run them up all the way open, back it off a quarter turn, let it blow, close it all the way down or close it as far as it'll go, and then open it back up. It just, there's old, they come old. And that old lasts a very long time in the valves. But the only way to keep the whole full stem old is to run them, operate them all the time, or, or once a year, so.
Okay, all right, great.
Any other questions, comments?
Just for clarification, you, how many did you say? You think maybe 250 of these valves?
No, Gene said 50 or 60 blowoffs. We have more valves than that, but 50 or 60 blowoffs.
And how many, how many blowoffs can you do in an hour?
Well, we're saying it depending, depending on if they're open, if they're visible or not. If they were visible, I'm gonna say you probably do two to three in an hour. If, if they're visible, there's nothing in the, nothing in the valve box. And, and just go out and pop the lid, operate that two or three times, let it blow off until the water turns. A lot of it's too, gonna depend on how, how long the line is stagnant. So if you're at the very end of a line and you don't have houses drawing very close to that, you may pull, if, if you're on a, you know, a quarter mile with no houses, you may, you may sit there 30 or 45 minutes to clear the lineup. And you can't just shut it back down. You can't shut it back down until you get clean water because once we shut it down, you're gonna have customers calling, or the citizens calling in and saying, hey, my wash has turned brown, my, my, my sink. And we're still gonna get some of that, probably like you do when, when you operate the fire hydrants. But we, uh, I would say two to three if everything is optimal. And, and with these not being operated in who knows how long, I can't promise anything. I can promise you efficiency and if, if your guys wanna, at, at any given time, you're, any of you are more than welcome to come out and, and work with our guys or ride with our guys as they work. We'll, we'll do, we'll accommodate anything.
Thank you.
Yes, sir.
Are you gonna be able to start if we prove this?
Uh, probably within a week or so, I could put a crew out, um, taking a look at these. And then, um, as, as we get things come up, we can, I can move people around and maybe put two crews, depending on the, a lot of us gonna be, if we move in and, and we start finding them, you know, just taking the time to find, you know, 10 or 15, 20 of them and then start operating them. It'll just, it, if they're all pretty visible, I can bring two crews in. We can get them knocked out pretty quick. But, um, and, and then too, I'm, I'm just a suggestion, we're just talking about blowoffs here. If the valves are not getting operated, it's the same, it's the same as a blowoff, but you still need to operate those as well at some point.
So this is a start. This is handling the blowoffs.
Yes, sir.
But to your point, there are valves across the entire system.
Correct.
That need to be massaged or?
Yes, sir. Yep.
Okay.
Just like your hydrants are, are operated by, I'm assuming the fire department here, uh, operates them once a year, once or twice a year. All your valves need that same maintenance. Uh, and that's what a lot of your city utility guys do on a daily basis, is just go out and turn, turn valves.
Tim, you got a motion in mind?
Uh, yes, sir. Uh, Mr. Mayor, I want to make a motion that the, uh, town of Stokesdale approves this contract with A and D Enterprises. As a matter of fact, Mr. Hodges, you're gonna have to sign this, uh, before you leave this room, if you would please, and sign and date it.
Well, Mr. Jones, one, let me jump in.
Yeah, please, please, Mr. Winfrey, please.
So this is a special meeting. Your, because it's special meeting, you cannot add to the agenda. You can only remove from the agenda. And I, I don't know that this fairly falls within item four on the agenda. That's,
My, my, the agenda was my wording. And if it doesn't fall under it, then that is my mistake, but I, it,
Mr. Winfrey, um, I hear you. Mr. Foy and I had a, had a conversation by phone, I guess, last week.
Okay.
And, you know, we discussed this proposal and also discussed the, uh, uh, request for proposals from the engineering firms. And, you know, we just basically decided that this would go on one, one agenda item for one special call meeting. I, I see your point, uh, but there was nothing nefarious here. I, I get that between Mr. Foy and I, it's just, uh,
We tried to include the, the kitchen sink with the subject wording.
Right. And, and so it just doesn't sound like a capital improvement. Maybe I'm wrong.
I mean, fair enough.
Uh, and anyway, I'm just,
Yeah.
I'm just, I'm concerned that, uh, uh, because it wasn't clearly, the public may not have had noticed that this was on, to be considered tonight. I'm concerned about your,
Yeah, well, that's, uh, that's why we pay you the big bucks, as they say.
Yeah.
But whatever you think, but we'll have to call another meeting in 48 hours to approve this.
So what, so what do you, legally, what do you suggest? I mean, what is the right thing for us to do tonight?
Well, is it, well, you've, you've, and, and the input you've gotten, I think, could be under comments. You, you have a category. So you've, you've, you've received information, which I think is not a problem. If you wanted to, and you have another meeting coming up, what, a week from, or two weeks from Thursday?
It's, uh,
Well, we're,
Yeah, it's two weeks from Thursday.
Mr. Winfrey, if, just if, for whatever it's worth, the, uh, Mr. Hodges and them have some availability of men and, and trucks right now that they may not have in a few weeks, either because of work they have coming up or emergencies. And then we have this situation where we have a deferred maintenance issue.
I understand.
And, and it, and it, I think it's important that we get started on this.
That don't have anything to do with whether it's legal for us to do this.
And so, well, I want to be sure I'm fully explaining myself. It's Mr. Winfrey's call, as far as I'm concerned, as to whether or not we can vote on this. But anyway, that is where I'm coming from as a single council member. We, we've been working in this direction, trying to get somebody to do this. Yates Construction does not have the, the men available. They, they just don't have the time. They, they're already shorthanded.
Right.
Uh, we, we, we just don't have many options.
And, um, I don't recall seeing anything about this in the agenda packet that was distributed. Was, was anything about this A and D Enterprises in the agenda packet?
There's a, there's a quote that was put in there yesterday, uh, so it didn't go out in the initial advertisement, but the quote was put in there just for council to review. But it wasn't in the, uh, the advertised packet that went out. I guess Ms. Martin sent that out last Friday.
Well, what's in the pack?
I, I can answer that. I was waiting on Royal Water Association to, to, uh, they wrote up the recommendation to ex, exercise the, the, uh, valves in our system, but hasn't had time yet to write up anything regarding blowoffs. And, and so I just held this a day or two based on what Matt with Royal Water was telling me so that we could handle it all at one time. It was just, you know, no, no secret here, but, uh, he would tell you the same thing. He's just busy running all over the state. He has other towns he takes care of, of course. And so I was trying to get all, his document in, in one place and this document in one place to present to council. And so that's, uh, basically why it didn't come out as early as I wanted it to.
Mr. Winfrey, where do we go from here? Certainly, it was, uh,
Wasn't our intention.
It, well, it was my intent to include this with water system improvements, but I can see where you're coming from. The word capital, uh, and, you know, doesn't imply addressing deferred maintenance. But, uh, we, we'll take your direction and we'll go from here.
Well, my, I guess my suggestion is if you feel like it needs to be done on an urgent basis, I mean, if it's something that you don't want to wait until the next meeting to approve it, you can, I guess if you give tentative approval tonight, and then my suggestion is that the next meeting, ratify that decision in a meeting where it's been advertised or, in a, in a, in a, in your regular meetings, you can change your agenda any way you want to. You could always add it to the agenda at a regular meeting, but you can't do it at this meeting.
You're, you're absolutely right.
I don't think there's gonna be any problem about doing this.
I understand.
I don't think there's gonna be any problem with, uh, him going ahead and setting up whatever needs to set up. I mean, I just don't think we can officially, I mean, from, that's up to you, but, but I, I don't wanna, I'm all for open, uh, being open and transparent. And, um, if there's any doubt, uh, I, I don't think that, um, whether he's got a truck or not matters, whether we're doing what we're supposed to do. But we, you know, we can say what we're gonna do, um, and just not make it official.
Well,
If, if, unless, I guess if it doesn't appear to qualify as an emergency, I guess.
I, I, in my opinion, it's not an emergency. I wouldn't even necessarily call it urgent, but I'd call it important that we get started on this. This man has a company with equipment and, and men that have the expertise to do this. We can't get it just anywhere.
And, and availability right now, which be taken for granted.
Well, and he's coming all the way from Thomasville to do this. I, it's,
So just to explain what's going on right here, this is a special call meeting and not a normal town council meeting. And state law requires anything under a special call meeting that fall under the agenda items. And the agenda item here is water system capital improvements and engineering firm selection. And our attorney is, is correct in saying this is not a capital improvement. So that's why you're seeing the back and forth right now.
Yes, sir. Now, it, but there is a, there is an item on the agenda for comments from the floor. I think what's been presented can be viewed as comments from the floor. And you could certainly state your intentions if you wanted to, to improve, approve it at your next meeting.
Yeah, well,
I think would be the way to,
Well, I, what I'm gonna ask council to do is call another meeting in 48 hours from this meeting so we can vote on this and, and get this company started before we get delayed for another reason. And, and that's just what I think we should do. We,
We couldn't do it Thursday night, Tim. How about Friday?
I'll be in town.
Can't we do it, uh?
I don't, I don't, uh, we've already got several special call meetings coming up, are the budget meetings. I mean, can we not put it on the budget workshop for next Thursday?
I, I just don't like the, these delays. Uh, this, this is the only critical service the town of Oaks, town of Stokesdale operates is our water system. We have kind of kicked the can down the road on these blowoffs for one reason or another. COVID, uh, Yates has never really had enough staff to do them for them, for us effectively. They've done some of them, but it's been so long that, that, to me, it's just, uh, the same as none of them have ever been opened. And, uh, it, it goes against my, my instinct to keep delaying. I, I, I understand Mr. Winfrey's point very well, and that's why he's here. No, nothing against him. I just, uh,
Tim, are you suggesting Friday at seven?
Why can't we do it Thursday?
Forty-eight hours.
Oh, today's Tuesday.
Yeah. I mean, we could, He could call it after this and we could meet at 11, probably on Thursday.
That's bound to me. I'll meet at three if we need to.
That won't work for me.
And I don't care.
I, I'm,
Well, I don't, I don't want just to be the one that got away.
We, we don't want it to get away at all.
Yeah, you know, this, this gentleman's been kind enough to stop by here with his men and meet with the mayor and I and discuss the finer details of this back and forth and, uh, write the proposal up and, uh,
Did everything, put it on the agenda.
So, so special call meeting Friday at seven?
I won't be available at that time. And Ms. Martin has just confirmed that she will not.
Now, now, he won't need to be. He won't need to be. He's okay. He, he won't need to come on.
Ask Ms. Unzucker.
No, no, he doesn't need to.
No, no, you, we wouldn't, they're asking to do that.
Mr. Winfrey, have we got to have a town staff member here? The town clerk gotta be here or the representative thereof?
No, especially if the meeting's recorded and we, we can, we construct what was said at the meeting. Um, then there's no need for the staff to be as long as it's been, everything's recorded.
Okay. And, and that'll get us, everybody happy. Uh, I, I, that's, that's what I want to do. I, I want to put this to bed.
Okay, so, call a special call meeting for Friday at seven?
Yes, sir.
And the purpose for that special meeting is?
Tim, word that.
The purpose of this meeting will be to discuss and possibly approve a, a contract to have our, uh, perform valve maintenance and, and, uh, open our blowoffs.
Well, while Mr. Hodges is still here, a point of clarification, uh, he's estimating on the low end two, uh, blowoff valves per hour. So he could possibly need to do, let's just say, 52, 52 valves. He could possibly need 26 hours?
There, there is no telling. You can't ask this man of how long this is gonna take, cause he's never worked on our system before. We've already admitted, nobody's touched them in, for, you know, a long time. And, uh, what we can do is agree on the unit cost, how much we're gonna pay him per hour or per day or what have you. And the unit cost he's provided is, is by the hour for two men and a truck. That's, that's kind of all he can do. Uh, if council wants to put a cap on this, you know, uh, we're, we're not gonna spend but so much money, uh, on a single vote, whatever that is, I think that's fine. If we want to put an end date on this, a calendar date that we're gonna stop and reevaluate, that's fine. But what's important to me is that we make a reasonable effort to get started on this. And, uh, after, after he's worked a day or two, I think we'll have some idea of what we're dealing with and how long it's gonna take and how much it's gonna cost.
Yeah, it's, it's a worthy project. I just, just wanted to, Yeah, it's, it's a worthy project. I just, just wanted to, okay, estimated time per unit. Okay.
Well, this is gonna, this is something that we've got to do.
Absolutely.
It's got to be done, and so.
No, there's, there's no question.
I don't know how far we should keep going tonight.
Yeah, well.
But, uh, we, we've got.
I wish we could vote for it tonight.
We'll have to figure out, uh, next week where the money's coming from and all those good things, and, uh, go American, it's gotta be done.
All right, Friday at seven.
Is there any more discussion? Michael, if you would, sign a copy of this and date it before you leave with, uh, with Mr. Wagner there.
I appreciate you coming, Mark.
Yes, sir. Yes, thank you very much. Any citizens' comments? Please. Yes, ma'am?
We're not even close to being ready there. Are you talking, are you going to the end already?
Uh, yeah. What else have we got?
Oh, yeah, that was citizens' comments, eh?
Excuse me.
We're still doing citizens' comments.
Can we hold off? Can we hold off? I'm out of order.
It was a trick.
No, 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 we, we really, hold it, hold it a second. We really needed to do that as citizens' comments.
We did.
Okay, well, then she's still open for citizens' comments.
Well, I'm, I'm at the bottom of the citizens' comment.
Yeah, but you're, should be at the top, because that was, he was the top citizen comment, because he wasn't really on the agenda. Isn't that what we said, to put him on citizens' comment, and that wasn't attorney, uh?
Yes, uh, so we have item four, there's still other items under item four to be considered tonight.
Oh, yeah.
As I understand.
Can I sit down?
You can recognize her.
Go ahead, please. No, go ahead, speak. Speak, please.
I wasn't gonna comment, but I have to agree that if you have a young man like this, and I know that there's the law, sometimes the law doesn't work for the people. He could be called away at any minute, because I know where I lived. There was always a problem with the water system, so we might not be able to get him. Again, I think it should have been finalized tonight, but of course, if you have to go by state statute, why not? But most politicians don't do, I'm sorry. That's it. I lean theory, you know me.
We try to.
Excuse me, sir?
We try to.
No, but I have to agree with Tim, and Tim, sometimes we bang heads, but.
Doesn't happen often, Ms. Theory.
I do agree with you, because when you have something that's gonna affect the citizens in the town, and you're gonna hear about it, if something could happen tomorrow, and you're not starting on this, but you're more important than I am. Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, to you, Mr. Foye.
Yeah, so, so recently, we learned we got the, a grant of four hundred thousand dollars, uh, via the Department of Water Infrastructure. So when you add that to, uh, the one point one million dollars from the state and the three point one million dollars to the federal government via Guilford County, we have nearly four point seven million dollars to, uh, to, you know, make our water system better. Specifically, items I'd like to discuss tonight, uh, are this, is, uh, the hopeful selection of a engineering firm vendor. The town, uh, did put out RFQ a couple of months ago to request for qualifications, uh, for the water line extension, uh, you know, which either option we choose. Uh, we can talk about the different options tonight, but, uh, I think that's still premature, but we just really need to, to select a vendor. Through the requ- request of qualifications process, the, the, you know, potential vendors don't put any prices in there for engineering, they just put their qualifications. And, uh, I believe this may fall under the Mini Brooks Act, the RFQ process with vendors. Uh, so we did get two of those back tonight. I also, uh, wanted to discuss a, a, a plan with moving forward with a water line extension down, potentially, uh, potentially moving forward with a water line extension down Ellisboro Road in front of Byright, uh, to connect to Cornelius Court. I believe this is only about a quarter of a mile. A couple of years back, the town did get the, uh, engineering performed by Kinnearly and Kinnearly, uh, Engineering Services. Uh, so I believe we have that, and I wanted to talk further about that to see if council would be interested in proceeding to the next step there. Uh, also wanted to, uh, discuss submitting a RFQ, another one, uh, this time for general engineering services, uh, for our, uh, the altitude valve and the stirrer. Uh, and lastly, an administrative update to cancel. Uh, it appears, uh, very likely that the one point one million dollars granted to Oak Ridge, Summerfield, and Stokesdale, the encumbrance extension date on that will be extended from June thirtieth of this year, uh, to a time yet to be determined. Uh, that's from an email via Representative Fairclough's office. However, uh, as of this meeting, I do not know if that has been approved, but they surely implied that, uh, that extension, uh, would be approved, and it is needed from the Town of Stokesdale, Summerfield, and Oak Ridge.
Mr. Foye, if I may interrupt you.
Please do.
How did you come upon this information? Did they call you? You called them, email?
I, I got the email.
Okay.
I got the email.
Uh, and lastly, for council, uh, Guilford County, uh, it was either yesterday or today, my days are running together. Abby Gosling with the county, who's, uh, our, uh, liaison with the three point one million dollar grant, uh, has requested, uh, a meeting, uh, just to kind of see where we are. We can expect these type of meetings to go on maybe quarterly, uh, with the county through the end of the, uh, throughout the duration of this project. Uh, that meeting will likely occur the week of the tenth of April. We're having a hard time, uh, making our schedules work right now, but, uh, once that meeting date is honed down, I'll let all of council know, and Robbie, I would like Robbie to go, uh, I'd like to go to the meeting, and I'd like Robbie to come with me, and then one other council member. Uh, this'll be our first check-in, so to speak, since the, uh, interlocal agreement with the county was, was, uh, was approved.
You say you don't have a date for that?
I don't. We're still working on making our busy schedules align, but I do believe it'll be the week of the tenth. So with that, we'll segue into the Hazen and Sawyer and the Thomason Hutton RFQs. I have reviewed both of them. Both documents were in, uh, in our packets. Uh, I do have some, just some general notes that I wrote down about both, both, uh, RFQs. Uh, in terms of Hazen and Sawyer, I noted that they'll complete eighty percent of the work, uh, and by extension, outsource twenty percent of it. I believe they've noted that their subconsultants for outsourcing would be a geological studies firm and a surveying firm. Uh, it is a note that one of the firms, uh, is minority-owned. Uh, I think that's important, uh, you know, that, that all contractors, uh, show a good faith effort, uh, that, you know, they are, have made a good faith effort to work with, uh, subconsultants or contractors that are minority-owned, especially when you're talking about federal money. Backing up, Kinnearly and Kinnearly is also minority-owned, uh, or historically underutilized business, I believe it's called. Uh, so, so I was impressed with the team assembled. Uh, there were, uh, there were little profiles for, for each, uh, team member. Uh, we're familiar with, uh, Mr. Aaron Babson, professional engineer with Hazen and Sawyer. He's been identified as the project manager over, uh, this project. I was impressed that the, uh, the outline, uh, was clearly, clearly communicated in layman's terms and, and offered also an illustration, uh, for, for the timeline. I'm not sure what page it was on, but if you were to reference page nine, they, they kind of give you an illustration from beginning to end and an estimate of how long, you know, that, that would take. Uh, so there is quite a runway leading up to construction. I was also impressed with, uh, that they, on their last page, which I believe this is important, section five, that they included a section for compliance with federal laws. I certainly believe this is important when we're talking about spending, uh, federal money through a grant process. There's a lot of, uh, yeah, I don't want to call it bureaucracy and red tape, but, well, I guess I just did. But there, there's a lot of that, and, uh, that'll be, uh, key to helping us with our documentation with Guilford County, who will require to see that documentation. Uh, and then lastly, Ha- Hazen and Sawyer has a, has a pretty keen understanding of the town's water system, having worked with the system for, for nearly four years now. Uh, and they have a, I would say, in my opinion, a general understanding of the two options that have been discussed. Looking at the other, uh, company that submitted a bid, it was Thomason Hutton. Uh, I noted that they will perform a minimum of fifty percent of the work done and assumably cu- subcontract out or subconsult out the rest. Uh, they mentioned, uh, one of the firms they would use, the geotechnical engineering firm, would be Tremont Engineering. Uh, like Hazen and Sawyer, they appear to have very experienced staff and project managers, and they have also listed many applicable projects. The re- I did note that the references they provided were for, uh, all out-of-state municipalities and counties. They seem to do, uh, a significant amount of work in South Carolina and Georgia. And they also clearly laid out the process, uh, and put that into layman's terms, which I believe, you know, I, I, I could understand that and, and I appreciate that. And, uh, it does appear that both companies, uh, are well-represented with graduates from the engineering school at North Carolina State, so, uh, I, I think they would be well-equipped for the job. So goo- good things to say about, uh, you know, from what I read about both firms. Obviously, uh, have more practical experience with Hazen and Sawyer. Uh, any other comments from council? That's all I have at this time on this subject matter.
So just going back to the layman terms thing, um, since neither, and it's got, you, I understand it's customary not to put a dollar amount on this, but how would we know as citizens if we're getting a reasonable deal since, since both seem to be qualified?
Well, and this is where it becomes tricky, because, you know, as long as we've been on council, we've never endeavored a project of this scope. I would say, you know, the, the motion tonight would be to select a engineering firm, and then, uh, you know, we'll need to kind of work with them and help them get a price of what it'll be done. Uh, if you look at Hazen and Sawyer on page, uh, let's see, on page, bear with me, guys. All right, there's a page in there where they've outlined the projects, and they've done one, I think it was Highway sixty-five. I cannot find it. It was a four hundred thousand dollar project for roughly thirteen thousand feet, I believe. On page sixteen? Yes, four hundred and twenty thousand dollars is what it cost for thirteen thousand linear feet of water line. And there are a lot of other factors that, you know, we don't know, you know, the bridge crossing or anything like that, so it's hard to do an apples-to-apples comparison. But if, I think thirteen thousand linear feet and eight inches of water line closely mirrors to what the Town of Stokesdale was looking to do in either option. Uh, so, you know, that could be a three-year-old figure for all I know. If it's three years old, you know, it's, it's probably gonna be more. We'll just, I, I, it's, it's hard, it's hard to know until we get the numbers from the selected firm. But I, I tried to do that by looking at the, the engineering fee and dividing it simply by the number of feet in the water line to come up with a, you know, a rough number, uh, for that. So I think, I think that was thirty-two dollars a foot for the engineering services on Highway sixty-five.
Well, Mr. Mayor, if I may, I'd like to make a motion.
Okay.
That we approve Thomason Hutton as the engineering firm for this project.
Um, if I might inter- interject, I'm tired of being nuisance tonight, but, um, uh, how this typically would work is you would specify which, yeah, I guess you have two candidates, uh, and typically what you do is you, you rank them, who's number one, who's number two, and then authorize either the mayor or someone else to negotiate with them. If they couldn't reach acceptable terms, then you could go to number two. So in other words, so, so essentially, you'd be calling on, you'd stage a preference, uh, between the two, and then start negotiations with those firms.
Well, Mr. Winfrey, with that said, I'll modify my motion. I'd like to, uh, make a motion that we rank Thomason Hutton number one, Hazen number two, and have the mayor, uh, engage in negotiations, uh, in that order with these two engineering firms.
Do I have a second?
You don't yet.
I'll, um, good lord. I'll second for discussion. I'll see where we're going with it.
All right, let's open the discussion.
Well, my logic for this is as follows. Uh, we have a close availability with Mr. Aaron Babson for consult, and I, I don't like the idea of putting all my eggs in one basket, but I have a lot of confidence in, in Mr. Babson. Hazen and Sawyer seems like a, a fairly large company for us to deal with sometimes with so many people involved. And so I, my logic here is that I would, uh, like to retain Mr. Aaron Babson in, in the capacity of a consultant, uh, to help us with Thomason Hutton if necessary, but also, uh, for those projects involving our, our pressure-reducing valve and our elevated water tank, you know, I, I wouldn't mind using a separate engineering firm for that and, and divide this up some so that we're not totally dependent on Hazen and Sawyer.
As far as the elevated tank and pressure-reducing valve, you know, the, we'll have to submit a new, a, a new RFQ for that, for general engineering services.
I understand.
Certainly, uh, Hazen could be, you know, a candidate for that, and Thomason Hutton. I, 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 I do find it very practical that, that Hazen and Sawyer has worked with the town for, for four years, uh, approximately, and, and have a general understanding of the water system, and, uh, ye- yes, they are a large multinational company, but we, uh, we've had success, I'll say specifically in the last two, two years of having a contact there. You know, that, that is local, uh, that has a vested interest in the system, and, uh, you know, uh, I think, I perceive, has a, a lot of knowledge of what we want already, and I think that would save council time, staff time, and, and, you know, and all that. Uh, you know, I, I certainly see the value in, uh, diversifying, uh, with engineering firms. I, uh, I was an advocate for going with Kinnearly and Kinnearly, uh, when Hazen, and, and, and a couple of years ago, uh, and Hazen and Sawyer also put a bid in for that, so I'm not a blanket yes on Hazen and Sawyer. Uh, I certainly think Thomason Hutton, uh, they, they appear to be a very impressive firm. Uh, um, you know, I, I have a lot of respect for those guys based off what I read, but I'll, uh, for this project, I believe, just having somebody with familiarity with our system, uh, staff, uh.